Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Tonight, we have a city council work session regarding the twenty twenty-two council policy agenda progress report. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Counselor Nishioka?
Present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leon?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here. Sorry about.
Uh, quite all right. Counselor Varney?
Here.
And Mayor Hoy?
Here. And if you join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to just take a moment before we get started and thank our Human Rights Commission for hosting a trans day of remembrance yesterday. Uh, I I attended that along with Counselor Stapleton, Counselor Hoy, and City Manager Staley, and I just wanted to thank, thank our Human Rights Commission for doing that. I also just want to just take a brief moment and acknowledge the tragedy at the Club Q nightclub at Colorado Springs. We just take a moment to pay our respects for that situation. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Stapleton, approval of the special meeting agenda?
Thank you. I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
The recorder, please. Any discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Nishioka?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
And Mayor Hoy?
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not tonight.
Thank you. So that takes us to our discussion on the two thousand twenty-two council policy agenda progress. I'm going to turn it over first to, uh, City Manager Staley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is a pleasure to be here this evening and talk to you about our policy agenda and where we are and where we've gone this year. Obviously, I'm new here, so I cannot take any credit for the progress that we've made today, but I think this evening you will see that we have done extraordinary work in the time allotted. I'm gonna have more comments, uh, further into the meeting, uh, but now um, refrain from going into any detail about our progress to date, but I am proud to be lead- leading an organization that is capable of such great things, so more to come on that in just a minute. Thanks. And we'll be turning this over to Colleen.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Colleen Rosellis from Moss Adams. Uh, thank you all for having me tonight as we go through your priorities. We have a short presentation for you all, and then we'll get to a discussion. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen. All right. So tonight, our plan is to do a review of what our progress has been so far toward our strategic goals, provide you some information on the community report and survey, and then really dig into your priorities for next year. When we're discussing those priorities, our goal is to have some informed conversations about those priorities moving forward, talk about our role in some of these big key initiatives like homelessness and climate action. Uh, because we're a resource-constrained public entity, we only have so much that we can accomplish in one year, and there are some really big foundational efforts that are still ongoing. Um, and so, uh, as a reminder to some of you who've been through, through some work with us before, uh, really thinking about your role in terms of serving and shaping the community, and this is a huge piece of that in establishing these priorities. So this meeting is part of an annual cycle. For those of you who are in your first priority session, every fall, the city releases their resident survey and the community report. This presents progress on twenty twenty-two goals. These are used to inform tonight's work session, which is the first of two, and you'll finalize your policy agenda in January, which is then gonna inform budget preparation, and this cycle repeats again. This is absolutely a best practice cycle that is not in place in as many communities as certainly I would love to see, but it's wonderful to see it here and to see it in action every year. So, within the framework of the, the city's operations, you have a couple of different places to really guide and ground your decision-making. The first is priority-based budgeting, which has established these six result areas and provides information on how the city spends its money. And then the five strategic priorities that we established in the twenty twenty-one through twenty-six strategic plan. Each year, you provide policy direction towards specific actions that help us to move the city toward achieving each of these objectives. Um, and they're contained in that annual council policy agenda. A reminder of the strategic plan model, so as I mentioned, resource-constrained public entity, we can't do everything, but we play a very critical role in the community. We can bring people together, we can partner with our stakeholders, and then we can accomplish our priorities more effectively as part of the community. Another piece that I just wanted to talk about before we really get into decision-making is our mission, our vision, and our values. So these are established and really worked on in collaboration with the city council, the community, whenever a strategic plan is established, and that's really important work, um, even though these are kind of big lofty statements, because it's how we make decisions and how we kind of ground ourselves and do that gut check of who we are. So when we think about making a decision, we wanna think about, you know, is it gonna help us fulfill our mission? Does it get us toward our vision? And then thinking about, does it align with our values? So, we really wanna do that gut check and ask ourselves those questions when we're making decisions, particularly about things like the budget, like new programs and services, or tough decisions that we have to make. Because if it doesn't answer yes to all of those questions, then we should take a step back and decide, is that something that we should do? So when we think about making decisions, we also wanna think about, look, it's accomplished by a city as both administratively sustainable and politically acceptable. Sometimes you have to make decisions and make priorities that don't necessarily have a right or wrong answer, and they have consequences and outcomes that we all have different perceptions of, but it's great to have conversations like this so that we can all align on the outcomes that we hope to achieve. And I'm gonna hand it over to Keith to do a little bit more talking.
Thanks, Colleen. I will, I will definitely do a little bit more talking, uh, with a focus on the little part, but as you're aware, uh, council adopted a policy agenda last year that included four P elements. Uh, those are responding to our sheltering crisis, planning for our future, engaging our community in sustaining infrastructure and services. In my mind, these four goals or priorities remain absolutely relevant, necessary, and are being actively pursued by staff, the community, and council, uh, for their implementation. We've made measurable progress on each of these. Uh, there certainly is work yet to be done, and we'll touch on that in just a moment. Uh, again, I am proud of the work that we have done to date on each and every one of these, and I will roll over to the next slide and, and provide just a little bit of insight about the work that we've done there. This slide just indicates some of the highlights from our, uh, twenty twenty-two policy agenda and the work that we've done in and successfully completed, uh, thus far this year. And certainly, you know, the community infrastructure bond was a major step forward, uh, for us and for this policy agenda and its implementation, so we're very proud of that, very happy about that. Our, our Salem comprehensive plan update, again, uh, another very significant, uh, milestone, uh, if you will, uh, for our community and our organization in moving forward, launching a new website, again, just a significant undertaking for any community, uh, and we have successfully done that. Launching an SOS team, uh, this is extraordinary work responding to the needs of our community, both, uh, in our unhoused community and in our neighborhoods and our businesses, uh, and I'm, I'm proud that we've been able to launch that and get that stood up. Projects and processes that are underway is, uh, addressing speeding in our neighborhoods, uh, putting equity into action, uh, looking at restarting commercial air service and expanding neighborhood engagement, and specifically in those areas. Uh, we have stood up micro shelter villages this year, uh, moving to Center Street to complete the micro shelter for the young adults. We've initiated two permanent supportive housing projects with Sequoia Crossing and Yaquinta, Yaquinta is scheduled to be opening, uh, in the winter of twenty twenty-three, so coming soon. Same with the navigation center. So, very significant steps forward for us, for our community, in addressing a significant concern about our homeless response, and as you'll see as we get into the survey, uh, our community, uh, continues to find that concerning and continues to identify homelessness as an issue that needs to be addressed. Other things that are ongoing, we're continuing to work on performance measures. We in, in anticipate being able to per- port back to you uh, early in twenty twenty-three, and of course, our customer service center is under construction and will be opening in twenty twenty-three as well, which is a significant step forward for us in how we deliver service here at City Hall. Uh, I call your attention to the, the list of projects and priorities that are included in the staff report. They go into considerably more more depth there, but I'm going to leave it at that and roll over to the next slide. Colleen, thank you. As you, as you recall, you know, we have four council goals, responding to homelessness, uh, planning for our future, engaging our community, and creating a sustainable platform for our services and our infrastructure. Well, it took a significant step forward in creating a sustainable platform for our infrastructure in the approval and uh, uh, passing of the, the community infrastructure bond measure a couple of weeks ago. However, we still have a significant gap from a service perfect perspective. Uh, our ongoing services like police and fire, uh, continue to stretch our capacity, uh, to meet our basic levels of service, and we are going to need to continue the conversation with council about how we close those gaps. Do we reduce our level of service, or do we increase our revenues to help uh, close those gaps? Of course, our homeless response is not funded past twenty twenty-four. That's a significant obligation that is outstanding. We will be working diligently with our, our, uh, legislative delegation, uh, and the governor and trying to maintain the level of funding that we've enjoyed from the state here recently, but again, that's a significant liability that looms out there. And then there's just other projects that, that are are demanding time, attention, and potentially revenue. Things like, uh, opening the airport, uh, to commercial service could have an impact on our general front revenues, uh, at least in a short-term basis. So, just things to consider as we roll forward here. Thank you, Colleen. Back to you.
All right. Thanks, Keith. So, as Keith mentioned, there's a lot underway, and it's in the community report. I'm not gonna repeat that word for word, but tonight, we're gonna talk about our priorities within the strategic planning framework. So here's another way of looking at kind of those big ongoing pieces and that work of the city that Keith just mentioned, really within that strategic plan framework. And you'll see this come up again when I talk to you about the priorities that you mentioned. Um, you know, as Keith said, the city's highest priority continues to be responding to the sheltering crisis, and the passage of the bond is going to lead to significant investment in community infrastructure, and that's gonna impact each of these areas. So I'm gonna hand it over to John from D H M to talk a little bit about our survey results.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, it's a pleasure to be back in front of the leadership of the city of Salem and to be working with your community again. John Horvick with the H M Research. Um, we had an opportunity to survey the community, uh, on community satisfaction. We've also done some work with you all recently on the community infrastructure uh, improvement bond as well. So you've seen me in some other contexts recently. But with regards to the community satisfaction survey, just first to ground in what we did, um, this was in September, right after Labor Day. Uh, so December seventh through thirteenth, um, so it's still really fresh, you know, information. I'm happy to answer questions if there's time about methodology, but know that we reach people variety different ways, which is really important. It's people's preferences for how they're, uh, how they communicate have changed. So both folks on traditional live interview calls, calling both landlines and cell phones, and an online option too, where people are randomly selected, like they are for the telephone call, but they're sent a text message where they can take the survey online. Most will do it on their smartphone, but they could send it to another device if they preferred. To emphasize, um, as we've done before, this survey is conducted in both English and in Spanish. And so if you're, if you, you get the text message, you can click on link to, to get the Spanish version. If you're a Spanish speaker, we do, uh, our best transfer to Spanish interviewer, do a callback. Five percent of the interviews were conducted, or five percent, excuse me, five percent of the surveys were conducted in Spanish. And then, um, we work real hard to ensure we have a good representative sample by all the difference or characteristics you might think about area of the city, age, gender, um, race, education, all those different things to ensure that we have a good representative sample of, uh, the adult population of the city of Salem. So that's what we did, and then go to the next slide, just some key findings. I think that probably the best thing I can do in the short amount of time I have here today is to take a step back to put these results into context. And the first bullet point here says, you know, resident views mirror national statewide trends more negative than positive. And that's just really true. If you look at sort of the, the classic questions, are things heading in the right direction? Are they off on the wrong track? You know, nationally, they've been heading down for quite a while, but, uh, in particular, the last couple of years. We see that same trend, uh, here in Oregon as well. Just about one out of four Oregonians say that they feel that the state's heading in the right direction. That's about half of what it was a few years ago. Uh, I believe it's seventeen percent in the city of Salem. It's not the lowest. We've been in communities across Oregon in the last couple of years, uh, but it is at the lower end. Um, and the issue that's driving sentiment is really what we've been seeing everywhere, which is concerns about homelessness. Uh, I believe something like fifty-seven percent of Salem residents said that that was their most important concern when asked to name anything. It was an open-ended question. It's about the level that it was last year and significantly above what it was in previous years. Every single community save one that we've done a, a survey where we asked that same question, what, open-ended, what's the most important issue in your community? In Oregon and Southwest Washington over the last two years, every single one save one, the number one issue has been homelessness. It's more intense in Salem than it is in some other communities, but know that Salem's not alone. It's not an island, that these issues affect communities across the, the state and the region. Um, and so, uh, you know, that context, I think, is important for interpreting these results. If there is something they would call out with that question is that there's a pretty significant increase in concerns about crime. In previous years, just a handful of percent, two, three, four percent, mentioned crime as the number one issue. That's increased to sixteen percent this year. Anytime we ask an open-ended question like this, if an issue gets to twenty percent, which sixteen percent is below, but if an issue gets to twenty percent, that's usually where I tell folks, hey, that's a flashing yellow light. When people can say anything that they want, and one out of five are naming something, you know, that something is really important. And so, for, uh, the big increase in, uh, concerns about crime this year, that also is not inconsistent, but we're seeing in, in, uh, communities uh, across Oregon and, and into Washington. Um, there are some changes in sentiment that, um, some are easier for me to understand, and some of them you might have better insight on. We did see a fairly significant drop in perceptions of the municipal court in quote and code enforcement. Um, from where I said it's not obvious with these data why that's the case, but you might have better insight, but that's something to call out. There's also a drop in perceptions of, uh, law enforcement. That's probably like in, likely driven by people's increasing concerns about crime. Those two tend to go together. Um, one other thing that we've seen in other places, uh, it did fall in, in, uh, I believe in Salem, but certainly most places during COVID, but this, this issue of being able to move across the city during peak times. Um, you know, most Salem residents are pretty dissatisfied with that. There's also, uh, a, a low level of satisfaction with safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. So, you know, transportation, both moving to and from, and safety are certainly priority issues for Salem residents as well. So those are some negative things, you know, just to be clear-eyed about them, but there's some shine, shining spots as well, I'd say, in particular, um, with, uh, emergency services, uh, fire, as well as with water and sewer. These are places where really strong majorities of Salem residents say, hey, things are going well. We feel satisfied with them uh, and wanna call those out. Also, being able just to do business with the city. Um, high marks there as well. About half of Salem residents say that there's part of the city is getting its fair share of services, so that's still decent, but the trend line is concerning. The trend line is certainly, uh, moving down. I will note that it is West Salem, uh, and North Northeast Salem are the areas of the city that are most likely to say that uh, cu- uh, city services aren't distributed fairly across the city. Um, those are some really high-level things to report. I think it's about forty pages, goes into a ton more detail, but I wanted to provide that context, uh, about how Salem sort of fits into the broader uh, set of issues and concerns we're seeing, uh, in the community, uh, communities outside of, of, of yours as well. So with that, I think I'll just turn it back over unless, unless there's questions that I can answer.
Uh, thank you, John. Uh, I would like to just start with a kind of a general question about, um, I know sometimes when we're doing polling, uh, people have a certain perception, and then when we give them more information, maybe their perception changes.
Sure.
And one of our challenges has been getting our information out in terms of what services we're providing, what are the efforts that are being made? I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on that and how that might impact our results.
Well, you know, in this fragmented media world and fragmented, uh, uh, tools that people have, that it's increasingly important to use multiple channels. We know, for example, um, that thi- things like, you know, the, the evening news is still one of the best broadcast mediums to get information to people. You can't control that very well. You can certainly get, try to get stories to them, but when we ask people how they're hearing about things, that is still one of the, the, the main drivers of getting information, the local paper, of course, as well. The things you can control are your pub- your publications, your emails, your social media. And those things, you know, social media use is certainly increasing. The challenge, of course, is that there's so many different platforms and different audiences, different ones. You know, younger people are much more likely to use something like TikTok, and older folks more likely to use something like Facebook. So, other than to say, like, you know, have key sets of information and try to contain them to the most important things, repeat them over and over again, understand how there's differences, uh, communication challenges might be across, say, demographics, and choose the right platform for them. And then if you, you know, if there's things that are gonna be on the ballot, you know, if in the future, and you don't know that, that consistent voters tend to be older, for example, and they're gonna have different media preferences, but I think, I think the key things are, is trying to be prioritized, the messages, repeat them over and over again. Use all the challenge, or all the, the mediums that you have, and just be aware that it's narrow slices that are gonna use each one.
Thank you, John. I also would like to hear your thoughts on, um, when you consider this, this community sax- satisfaction survey, which I think by all accounts is not fantastic. And then you look at the fact that we just passed our three hundred million dollar bond with sixty-four point some percent of the vote. How do you, how do you square those two realities?
Well, the, there's different things you could look at. I certainly had, going into a, a ballot measure, if I knew nothing else, I would want the, you know, residents to feel satisfied with the way things are going in their community and have trust in their leaders. Uh, absolutely. The other side of it is that, that these results say that the community recognizes that there's needs. Um, and what they told you is that they're continually willing to invest in those needs, that they see problems, they see deficits, and they wanna see improvement. Uh, my worry with these results is that willingness to invest will erode over time. Clearly, that hasn't happened. The other thing I'd say is that you all and community partners did a great job of telling voters in Salem that, one, they can get these great benefits without having their taxes increase, and two, that these are valued investments that are gonna improve their quality of life. Um, so I, yeah, there's a temptation, I think, to read these results, survey results, people are upset about things, and then the election results and see like that they kind of are cross purposes, but I read them as as, you know, in the, the community satisfaction surveys, they're telling us, hey, we see this community has deficits that we need to invest in, and you all did a good job of communicating what those benefits are and the value to.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Horvick? Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. John, um, I have a question regarding the, I think I mentioned this last time too, on the, it's obviously the number one issue, the homelessness. And is there any chance we can start asking some more questions on that? See, because what we, what we come across is there's a big, um, um, wanting from the communities for us to do something with regards to homelessness. But then when we propose a site for a mini shelter, when, uh, a hotel is bought, when, um, organizations are engaged to provide food, there's a pushback, you know, so just, I know there's a concern there, but um, it, it goes both, you know, we're hearing it from both ends. Either we're enabling people or we're letting them die on the streets, you know, so it's worth getting, but these survey results, uh, there's just, I wish we had a little more info. Wish we could dig a little deeper.
Certainly, we can continue to evaluate whether this instrument is answering the questions that are most pressing, and perhaps in the future, we should think about asking deeper questions about how people expect city of Salem to respond to homelessness. I don't think these data can give us great insight. Um, it's just 'cause the questions weren't asked. I'll share a couple of things that we've been hearing, um, in other work that we've been doing, if it's helpful. The world is more complicated than this question that we get a chance to ask from time to time, but I think that the trend line is instructive. A question we ask in local and statewide surveys is, is homelessness most the result of a lack of affordable place to live? Or is it mostly the result of mental illness and drug addiction? Again, the world's more complicated than those two choices. Do we have seen a notable shift where in local communities, particularly statewide, that was a kind of a fifty-fifty proposition, or, or in many communities leaning towards housing is the driving cause of homelessness? Now, more often than not, we're seeing residents and voters tell us that they believe it's mental illness and drug addiction. I'm not a policy expert. I don't know if people are right or wrong on that, but I do wanna share with you that that change has happened. So as you're thinking about, I don't know, making choices of, about what you do to address homelessness in your community, but particularly being able to reflect what community members likely sort of values and concerns are. Uh, so I would, I would reflect on what that sort of change that we're seeing might mean for you with regards to that. Lots of times, we've done surveys where people tell us that homelessness is a concern, but they're not willing to support shelters in their community. There's nothing, there's nothing particularly unusual or new about that, unfortunately. Having someone else take care of responsibility is much easier to do than to take it on your own, and I wish I had sort of a, a silver bullet, uh, solution for you on that, but that's going, likely gonna be a persistent challenge, you know, going forward, and just having to do the community outreach, sharing what the benefits are gonna be, uh, how their community, how their neighborhood will or won't be impacted, and just, you know, doing that work. I, I wish I had something more, more concise to share, but that's just, it's a very common thing. But the broader trend is a sense of, of mental illness and drug addiction are a driver.
Thank you, Mr. Horvick. Counselor Varney?
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. Um, I had a couple of questions. One was on methodology, um, with the four hundred response sample size.
Mm-hmm.
Was that made up of, I, I found it interesting that you had the different quotas set for the different demographic categories?
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering, um, how challenging it was to get to those quotas. I mean, I'm assuming that you kept going until you got a total of four hundred respondents, right?
That's right.
You kind of narrow it down, because I imagine certain demographics were more difficult to fulfill quotas in than others.
Absolutely. So if we don't, so the reason we set quotas is that different types of people are more willing to answer the phone, or hit a text message, or just frankly, more interested in providing their input. So the groups that are most likely to respond to surveys on any topic, any issue, people who are older, people with more education, women, much more than men. Uh, and so if we do a survey without monitoring those different demographic quotas, we end up with Uh, and so if we do a survey without monitoring those different demographic quotas, we end up with a survey that's not balanced, not representing the community. The ones that are most difficult to reach are young people, those with less education, uh especially those uh men, men a bit as well, but especially younger, a low education are the are the are the most difficult to reach.
Okay, and the three area, there were only three areas, what, West Salem, South Salem?
Yeah, we we've divided the city up in that way in the past and so for consistency, so we can track things over time. We can divide the city up in other ways, too. Ward, for example, would be another way, but we need to divide the city up. We can only divide the city up like so many ways so that we still have sample size large enough in each of those parts of the city to say something meaningful. And so that's that's the way we've we've historically done it.
Okay, I one one last question. One of the things I noticed is over the last five years was there's been an increase in dissatisfaction with the city and a decrease in engagement, which makes sense. And so that's why I'm asking the demographic information because be able to address that. Will there be a way for us to dive into the data kind of further to help?
Sure.
Guide some of, you know, policymaking decisions about how to move forward to improve those.
You bet. I can't remember how many pages. It's probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred pages of cross tabs. There's every single question broken out by every single single demographic variable that we collected in the survey. So if you're the sort of person that wants to get into the nitty gritty, absolutely, that information is available and available for you to 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 look into.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Nodak.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I look forward to survey season every year. And to my newer colleagues on council, I hope you're enjoying nerding out with us on this data because I find it incredibly fascinating. Uh, what I always encourage my younger peers is that, yes, by all means, take good stock of the anecdotal observations that you have and that a handful of neighbors may tell you on the regular. But don't overlook statistically significant and scientific data that we have too, because sometimes it can surprise you. And this year is no exception. One of the things that I was a little bit confused by is, on the one hand, it looked like there's a high overall satisfaction rate with law enforcement and public safety. But I also saw, as you indicated in your report, uh a twenty point drop.
Yeah.
Which is shocking to me. Uh, can you help me unpack that? How do we explain uh that distinction in data? And then I have a follow up to talk about.
My best read on it is that as crime has increased, there's some number of folks who are giving lower res- lower responses to police or law enforcement as a reflection of, you know, a perception of reality of of experiencing more crime in the community. And so we're asking them about the agencies that that is responsible for addressing the thing that they say they're concerned about. Uh, and so that's that's my best reflection. I don't think, I don't think based upon the trend line data and lots of work in other communities, that you should interpret this as less willingness or support, less willingness to invest in policing or less support for police. But there is a a perception that law enforcement is the agency that is, we're gonna, we want to hold accountable to the to the public safety in the community. And that's that's driving the decrease.
Got it. And and that makes perfect sense to me and that 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 tracks with my perspective. My next question had to do with the parks. There's on page fifteen of your report, it said that more than half of Salem residents are satisfied with city parks. Can you help me understand uh what was the question or questions plural that were asked to determine satisfaction with city parks? Like, how is it worded?
Sure, it's the same for all those cities serve, all the services, but let me just pull it up right now. And it's the same way we've asked it before. Hold on one second.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I have one more follow up after that, if that's all right.
Sure. The following is a list of community services in Salem. For each indicate if you are very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, not too satisfied, or not at all satisfied. That's the way that question is asked. And then parks, parks is one of them, as is law enforcement, as is fire and police or fire and ambulance services. They're all part of that list.
And so I noticed uh chart eighteen talked about dissatisfaction with parks and rec. It was a fascinating breakdown depending on the number of years that you've been living in Salem.
Yeah.
But I'm curious, uh, what was the um on another key demographic, I know that my ward has some of the best parks in the city. But not every ward has Minto Brown in its backyard. So I'm kind of curious for some of our other parts of town who don't have the embarrassment of park riches that my neck of the woods has. How did the geographic outlook on park satisfaction turn out?
I could, I can follow up with you. I don't have that at my fingertips. Generally, though, what we tried to do is highlighting the report where there were large differences. So without, I'll 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 get the actual number for you, but my guess is that there were relatively small differences by area of the city. Because if there were a large difference, we would have gone out of our way to to call that out. But I I will verify that for you.
Thank you.
And that's the sort of information that is in those cross tabs for anybody who does choose to dig into them.
Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much. Um, I have one request, um and then one question for you. John, when you were doing um a survey for us for the bond, I you asked the first question, right? Like, how do you feel about this bond? Um, and you gauged them and then you explained a little bit that, you know, we wouldn't have uh an increase in taxes, um et cetera. And then you asked them the question again.
Sure.
And I'm wondering if at all possible, if we could ask that kind of question when it comes to how we are addressing our unhoused crisis and then, you know, get that first initial feedback, but then, you know, lay out what we're doing, right? In the past, you know, five years, we've given this much money to this, this many new housing units, this many, you know, the navigation center on and on SOS team. Um, and then gauge again. Um, I think that would be really fascinating because I have a feeling that there is a lot of um just not knowing what this is up to.
Sure.
I would love in future years, if we can kind of change how we're asking this question so that we as a council can really get some good feedback, um you know, and and use the opportunity, of course, to educate folks um while we're at it. And then I do have one question for you. Um, there was one about the value for money question. And maybe I'm saying that wrong.
No, that you, I I know the question you're asking, yeah.
Yeah, so could you unpack that a little bit for me and and help me understand? Do you think that um from reading the data on this, that people feel reluctant to increase the funding to address their concerns?
I think that, so the the question is satisfaction with city services for the taxes you pay is basically the question is. And, you know, sixty four percent this year were dissatisfied. Give you context, in twenty twenty, it was thirty eight percent. So not quite a doubling, but quite a big increase. You know, it's important, so a couple of things. One, it is valuable to ask questions multiple different ways. Uh, to triangulate, so to speak, or to get validation, cross validation from different sort of frames. I think it's difficult to disentangle at the same time, people's overall satisfaction with the way things are going in the city. And then, you know, how they feel about the return they're getting for the taxes that they're they're paying. So there's gonna always be a correlation, I think, between those two, and that's part of what we're picking up, we're picking up here. Um, but in terms of going forward with willingness to pay taxes, yeah, I mean, I think this is a flashing yellow light. I also think that the bond measure that was placed on the ballot this November shows that if you ask the community to pay for services that they value at a rate that they think is reasonable, using a mechanism that they're familiar with or have confidence in that you can get to yes. You know, I I don't know what might be an ask in the future. If it connects to their biggest concern, say, for example, homelessness, that would be sort of one political challenge if it, you know, went to ask for something that is not a high concern. I don't know, fill in the blank. Um, but that would be, that would be a different, different concern. And then there's just, you know, how people are feeling about the community generally. Do they want to invest in the community? Do people, do they, you know, talk positively about their friends and family to move into community? So, you know, it has other effects as well. But I'd say, yeah, it's a flashing yellow light. Um, but obviously, you know, November proved that valued services for a good price with mechanisms of the trust communicated by trusted leaders, you know, it's 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 not, it's not determinative.
Great, thank you so much.
Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is Counselor Leon. Um, I have a few questions relating to the report. And um this is in regards to equity. And I understand that you mentioned that you want to have good responses. And but as we also know from the Human Rights Commission, there are over sixty plus different cultures and languages spoken in the city of Salem. And even if we're looking at the Salem Kaiser School District, there's at least five top different languages.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at this um report and I see that ninety five percent of the responses were in English, five percent were in Spanish. So, and I also am taking a look at question number forty seven that looks at race and ethnicity and the different percentage in categories. And my main concern is, you know, you're only offering this primarily in English and some in Spanish, so you're still losing out on individuals who most likely would respond if they had access to this in their respective language. And I know this is something that we brought up, I believe, at other council meetings where how will we increase the ability for other community members to respond where English may not be their primary language, but they're also engaged within the community, but just don't have a way to communicate this.
Yeah, I'm glad you're bringing this up. It's an important observation. This survey was conducted in English and Spanish, but it wasn't conducted in Vietnamese, for example, or or Hmong or or Russian. Uh, wasn't conducted in a lot of other languages that are spoken in the community. I'd just say like from a like a a adult uh the survey can be conducted in all those languages, like it's, that's technically possible. We have capability to do it. There are cost impacts for that. So, you know, just don't be upfront with that, and that could be a discussion in the future, but that that's trade off. And then, you know, for you all, this survey doesn't have to end today. I mean, there are things that could be done, could be programmed online using Survey Monkey or some other tool like that and and having it translated into, you know, languages of of importance and concern for the community and working with community partners to ensure that non-English speaking folks can also weigh in uh as well. So, you know, this survey exists in English and exists in Spanish. Um, but it can be translated in other languages and and reached out to those communities. But you you're right to observe that this this survey is representative of the English and Spanish speaking members of the community, but not others. And that's that's important to consider.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you brought up the um the ability that we might be able to get it translated into multiple languages, at least if anything, the top five languages spoken within the Salem Kaiser School District. Because I believe in the top five besides Spanish, it's also two Micronesian languages, this Chukis, Marshall East, Russian, and I think it's Vietnamese when I last checked, that was within the top five Salem Kaiser School District languages. So if we're being a little bit more mindful in terms of if who you're reaching out to, if you're reaching out to families, for example, you want to make sure that you have the the translations done in a way that makes sense. And I mean, you know, the city um is proud of our partnerships with other community organizations. And and so I don't see why we can't reach out to our community partners to let them know that we have this survey, we want to hear from you, because, I mean, we are just losing out on on the important voices to 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 share their experiences and what they see happening in Salem.
Thank you, Counselor. It feels like a little bit of a deja vu. I remember this exact conversation last year and yet we didn't um we didn't do anything to um take action on the concerns that you raised and that others shared, so uh maybe we can rectify that. But thank you for raising it again. Counselor Nodak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to piggyback on what Counselor Leon said. And I would also suggest that we consider every once in a while, hosting a town hall in a native language. Uh, you know, we should do a uh Spanish speaking town hall. We should do a town hall that uh in a variety of languages, reaching out to different groups in culturally competent ways. I understand bandwidth can be a challenge, and I know the survey is an important opportunity to do this, but I don't think it should be our only opportunity that we reach out to folks in their native tongue. So um I would encourage us to do that uh every, even if we only manage to do that once a year uh to some of the major languages in the area, I would be, I think we could get some fascinating input from, for example, the small business owners who are operating uh their store in their native language and would love to learn more about what our urban development department can do to help them. Or what our neighborhood services can do to assist them. Um, how can we partner with group, with groups who want to create a business here and raise a family here in their native tongue, I think would be extremely helpful. Um, I still remember during the pandemic, reaching out to a small business in my ward. Uh, he did not speak English as his first language. And he didn't know about a lot of the small business administration funding that was going out the door to restaurants and a variety of other uh groups. And it was kind of a free for all. And I'm sure folks who were running a business at the time remember how crazy it was trying to apply for these resources available at the federal level. And if you were savvy, if you were in the know, if you were organized, and of course, if English was your native language, it was easier. I'm not gonna say easy, but I'm gonna say it was easier to sign up for those options. So anyway, I think that's something we should consider down the road. How can we host town halls in culturally competent ways every so often to strengthen our relationships with other parts of our community? Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Actually, uh, Counselor Gonzalez and I were just meeting earlier this week, or I guess it would have been last week with Levy Herrera regarding uh out at Colonial Libertad and talking about this very issue and about how to actively engage. And he had some great suggestions. I've already had some follow up conversations, so I'm really looking forward to to doing exactly that, so. Thank you for that suggestion. Are there any other questions for Mr. Horvick? Well, thank you, John, for joining us. We appreciate it. We appreciate your work and giving us these insights. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Cheers.
Thank you. Are we back to Colleen now?
You're back to me. Thank you so much.
You bet.
All right, let me get back to sharing now. All right, so uh I have had the pleasure of one-on-one conversations with just about all of you, eight out of nine. Um, illness got in the way of one, but we'll cover our bases tonight. So um the goal of those conversations was to discuss our individual priorities. Um, and the overarching theme of these discussions was to stay the course. We are dealing with some large systemic issues. We want to see our solutions through. Or put another way, we're in the second year of a strategic plan. Um, so as you can see, we're not about halfway through yet. Um, the goal is to really deliver on the commitments of the community. So what you've all been waiting for, here are the results of our conversations. There's a lot on this slide. I'll give you a few minutes to take a look and I'll talk through it as well. So what we heard from you, each item on this list has at least two council members noting as a priority. They are in frequency order with the most popular on top. Far and away, we had addressing homelessness and continuing to support the sheltering crisis and response as our number one. And then building great neighborhoods, that category came, I came away with as as kind of number two. So within the homelessness category, we had continuing to support those investments in sheltering and response that the city has invested in and made progress in over the last year, focusing on affordable housing. And then, as Keith mentioned, identifying sustainable revenue sources for those existing services because there is a sunset on a significant amount of that funding. Pretty new to this list, um or at least new to being elevated to this list, is continuing to collaborate with the county in particular and other entities to make sure that we can provide those holistic services. On the building great neighborhood side, we have the transportation system plan. So again, coming from our Salem plan, this is a huge piece. You know, we heard from the survey results. I heard from all of you that the need for transportation safety and a real desire for multimodal travel and safety across the city. There's also a real interest in supporting uh active parks and an interest in applying an equity lens to our park investment. So what, when we are able to make investments in parks, expand them and develop them to really make sure we're doing it with an eye toward use across the city and equitable use to all of our populations. And then encouraging more engagement in neighborhood associations so that we can better reflect the community. Going back to creating community resilience, had a lot of interest in continuing to invest in downtown development with the lens also of supporting tourism, thinking about Salem as a place to be and stay. Uh, it really thinking about exploring job creation and continuing to support that. And then the commercial service expansion at the airport. With respect to equitable delivery of city services, so number one, across the board, seeking sustainable revenue, we want We want to support our ongoing commitments, we want to support our core services and deliver that level of service to the community that they respect. There's also interest in conducting an equity analysis of city services. This was in the original strategic plan document. And um a lot of folks had interest in looking at that. And then looking at the city charter, the boards and commissions. This is something that actually a lot of communities are doing right now. A law has changed in the last couple of years. In terms of how we view local government. Many city charters were developed in the nineteen twenties and haven't been significantly updated since then. So we have a lot of. Cities that are actually taking a look at their charters, also looking at boards and commissions, making sure that they reflect the community. Are a good pipeline to a city council and a future public service, as well as really doing their job. Because it does take a lot of staff time to support, and we also want to make sure that when we have folks volunteering their time, that they're actually really contributing to the community. And then finally, with respect to the climate action plan, so the climate action plan is in progress. Continuing to implement that and making sure that it's aligned with a transportation system plan and those other our Salem related updates. So we can make sure that we are taking a look at everything in a holistic manner and um aligning with our climate action commitments. It was brought up by a number of you to take a look at our municipal code, our regulations, so that our development is safer and more sustainable. And also making sure that those investments are done with an equity lens. So our questions tonight, and I can go back to that slide, or I can stop sharing, whatever you would prefer. It's really thinking about what do we want to lean into? Um again, this is, I think, the third time's a charm, resource constrained city government. So what do we want to lean into and really what are our trade-offs? And I'm going to stop sharing for a moment so that we can discuss.
Uh thanks, Colleen. Um I guess I'd open it up for discussion, or Mr. Staley, did you have any thoughts before we launch into that?
No, sir. I'll be interested to see what council wants to go with this.
Thank you. Uh so. Colleen has has kind of posed the question, what what are our, we've listed out our priorities, what are, what are the things that we really want to focus on right now? Do you have thoughts? Would it be helpful if we uh shared the screen again? And if we do that, could you be sure and please use your automated hand raised, because that's probably the only way I'll be able to see you. Councillor Nishioka.
Thank you. I was basically wanting to see the screen again. Thank you very much. Um. What, so I was in the finance committee uh just just a couple hours ago. And it's clear that we need to find sustainable funding for so many things. And so as I look about, I look at these goals. I think that I really want to find ways of. Funding and and how and and creative ways that we might be able to find ways to fund, because. Right now, bonds are infrastructure and we need services and we need ways to have money. To pay for the people, the staff and the services that those bring. That's really all I want to say.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stapleton.
Thank you so much. Um I think my question is for um Mr. Staley. Um you know, throughout this, I'm kind of reading a a little bit between the lines too about just all of the different large. Um projects that staff are working on right now, the goal five. Um I know our our T S P is kind of off the off to the races a little bit. Um the the climate action plan, all of these different things are happening behind the scenes. And I do know that the housing needs analysis is one of those things that are kind of right on the back burner, but. Um hopefully, I I guess my question for you is, when is that going to get started? And how much do we need that information in order to make, uh you know, real um. How do I want to ask this question? I know that there's there needs to be focus on affordable housing. Everybody agrees. I think you can see that from this slide. But how important is the housing needs analysis to that information and to what council is going to be faced with in the future? Um to really meet the need there? And is there capacity to move it up in the line if? If that's something that needs to be done? Does that question all make sense?
Yeah, it it does. Thank you, Councilmember Stapleton. Uh it does make sense. Uh I'm not sure that I will have the answer for it. And I I see Lisa is on and I'll ask her to come forward as well. When Norm was here, we did have discussions about moving that work forward on the. The planning department work plan. Um as you can see by just by your email here. Uh over the weekend regarding information requests at neighborhood associations. Questions related to housing are on people's mind. When you're talking about homelessness, it's hard not to also talk about. Housing issues. Uh and when we're seeing multi-digit percent increases in rent rates in our community. Uh housing is continued to be at the forefront. The other day, you asked uh Nicole Oates to provide us, provide you with some information about. Our housing needs in the community and and. I think what the housing study would add to that would be what's the current deficit that we have today? Or affordable housing units? Um how does our housing stock, as it currently is configured, align with the income capacities of our community? So you can start to generate some answers and thoughts about. How many affordable units are we going to need to go forward? And how are we going to achieve that sort of number? Uh while I was in the city of Olympia, we did a a housing needs assessment and it was helpful. In informing our comprehensive plan and forming our policies around homeless response and the like, so. Lisa, you want to come in and and add some more clarity around where we are with that?
Um sure, Lisa Anderson will be the um interim community development director. Um so we've done our housing needs analysis and in Oregon, that's just looking at your land need, right? And we knew we needed a lot more land for multifamily, and we've rezoned that land through our Salem. Um and more than we needed, right? We have all this mixed-use land. And so our next step is to do a housing production strategy. Um we don't have that as our next immediate project. We could look at reprioritizing that. Um urban development and community development are, you know, going to work on that together, because the housing production strategy. Is not about the land anymore or the zoning. It's about what kind of resources could the city bring? You know, to make sure that these housing units are built and that, you know, all units, but then also affordable units. So I think it's really. Really important next step, because we've done the base work with the land and the zoning. And we really have to have more of a comprehensive look at what kind of resources do we have? What can the city do to make sure these units um are going to be built? But we, I um I don't have the date in front of me, but I think we were thinking twenty twenty-four is when that work would start. Um so it's not the immediate project that we have lined up right now.
Mayor, can I ask a follow-up, please?
Sure.
Uh so Lisa. In a room director. Um can I ask what, because it's all about trade-offs, right? Um if the council, uh you know, all agree that we should really focus in on on this. So that we can uh move forward in the in a good direction with all the information we need to make decisions. Um what would we be putting on the back burner then? What are you working on now that we would, we would lose time on?
Yeah, the the it's really a staffing, because we have just the small handful of staff that work on or working on the T S P, the climate friendly rules. Uh you know, Parks Master Plan, um housing production. So there's people that that specialize, but there's a core group of people that are working on all of them together, so. Um I yeah, I don't know if Kristen's on here, so I wouldn't want to speak to urban development staff in their capacity, so they're a huge component of that. Um and then our staff would be Eunice Kim, who's working with Public Works on on Goal Five, Climate Friendly, um and the T S P.
All the things.
All the things, yes.
Thank you so much. I would really be interested to hear um how my colleagues feel about this conversation. It was very helpful. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Yes, and I am on here and I uh I have the schedule for implementing our Salem up in front of me. So you the upcoming activities um for, you know, activities during the rest of twenty twenty-two into twenty-three. And twenty-four include T S P update, the Goal Five, our period inventory. The economic opportunities analysis, um climate action plan strategy. So those things are all kind of front-loading the implementation of our Salem. And then kicking off in twenty-four and moving through twenty-five, we have the housing production strategy. And the comprehensive park system master plan. So it really is a staffing capacity issue there, you know. Good, solid four, really big initiatives. Um the staff will be busy with throughout twenty-three, and we we just don't anticipate with our current staffing levels. Having capacity to take on these next initiatives. Uh until we've moved some of these other projects um kind of further down the pipeline.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rutherford, uh councillor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um in looking at the council priorities, I'm in general agreement with these. But I think I have some thoughts about parks, though. Uh we know from our survey that more than half of respondents are already satisfied with our parks. And we just voted to invest tens of millions into park infrastructure. And we also know that by far and away homelessness and increasingly public safety and affordable housing are all very top of mind for our residents. So in terms of triaging, I think our city needs to. Triage serving those with the greatest needs, our most vulnerable, the people living in poverty. The ones who are on the brink of homeless are those who are already homeless, because that's where we'll get the biggest bang for buck. So um I think in terms of funding priorities in the future, I don't think increasing funding in parks above and beyond. What we've already agreed to do makes a lot of sense, such as that parks bond, in addition to what we already did, I don't think is a top priority. According to our residents and given the needs for funding elsewhere, that's that's the reason why I wanted to call that out specifically. And in terms of sustainable funding, I wholeheartedly agree with the comments already made. We need sustainable funding sources in order to continue providing the services that people come to expect. Um I think that the best way to do that will be to explore a public safety levy. Which would enable us to go to the voters to talk about funding public safety services. That would include things like police and fire, but also code compliance and mobile crisis. There there are services needed here. I suppose our uh SOS team would also fall under those categories. Those services take a huge chunk out of our general fund. And if we had that with a sustainable funding source through a levy, for example. Then that actually frees up other general fund dollars to create sustain the sustainability of revenue. For everything else, including homelessness. And I also wanted to point out, per my questions earlier, there's a reason why I asked questions about uh perceptions of law enforcement and public safety. And D H M pointed out that, oh no, the they still have a very high satisfaction rate. So a public safety levy. Aiming at some of our most popular services in town, again, seems like a more effective way. Of creating sustainability of funding for one source, freeing up dollars for another source.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hoy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um well, I'm new to this. I'm way more of a citizen uh than a councillor. Because I've been a councillor for about five minutes. Um but the survey told us that the, there's a dissatisfaction. With how things are getting done and as a, and how quickly things are getting done or not done. Um and I'm in agreement with the other councillors that it might be time to switch things up in my own household, right? If tires become a priority, um then we have to move some money to make it happen, and we figure out how to do that. Um I I think we need to figure out ways to work together with the county and the state. To get the most done in the least amount of time. And I don't, I don't know how to do that, but um. I think we need to figure out a way to do that. Also to um show the citizens that we can get more done. In less time and show some successes to them, um because what what they see, what I see driving all over town. Um it is mostly the stuff that distur disturbs me the most. And that's homelessness and people who are in need of resources for mental illness and drug addiction. And I just think we need to shift. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nishioka.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. Um I was wanting to ask a question and uh if has anyone, I'm thinking that somebody has. Considered outsourcing some of these big projects of planning? That could then reduce the the. Overworked staff being responsible. Um and if so, could that be as effective or it may be less effective? If there's been any thoughts about outsourcing any of these types of major projects that that weigh on the staff?
Thank you, councillor. Mr. Staley or Ms. Anderson Nobleby? I think probably either one of you would be the ones to respond.
I I'll jump in first and, you know, um have leave to follow up, but uh. Uh even having consulting services. Uh supporting a planning effort. We still have to have staff there feeding feeding that effort and supporting their work. Uh the transportation system plan update, for example, we do have consulting services coming on board to. Assist with that effort, but the reality is it's also a very significant look staff work as well, so. I'm not sure what uh. Uh Lisa's plan is in regards to the housing needs production and the other work that we have planned. How much consulting work is is planned there? But if you can come on and, you know. Clarify that. I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Sure. Um yeah, I would I would agree with the city manager. So we do, we did use a consultant, for example, for our Salem. Um for housing needs analysis, we generally do, but there's still an intense amount of staff time to not only manage the consultant and provide all the. Kind of relevant contacts and information that the that a consultant's not going to know, but we generally take on our own outreach. Um and you know, we we won awards for our Salem outreach, and that's pretty time um intensive to to get the community to come along with these projects. But but we think it's worth it. So we do, we do utilize consultants, but it 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 doesn't alleviate the the staff burden to work on these projects.
Thank you for answering those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hoy. I see that your hand is still up. Is it, or is it, you're back in the queue or? No, councillor Varney.
Oh, thank you. Uh this is a really helpful discussion. Um I too feel, I think, uh addressing our homelessness issue is a priority. I mean, we are, we have been doing a lot, but we need to find a source of revenue somehow to continue what we've done. And then perhaps increase it a little bit. Um I did want to put a plug in for parks. Um because they are a priority for me. I feel we need more money for parks. And the reason is, I feel the fact that we have a number of undeveloped parks and we have a lack of parks in certain areas. It's part of the reason for the dissatisfaction in the survey. Uh when I looked at uh the parks and rec, um only sixteen percent of people are satisfied with our parks and recs. Nearly sixty percent fall into the next two categories. Um one of the things that I've heard, at least here in West Salem, is, and I'm concerned too, is when we do a parks master plan. We bring the community, the neighbors around the parks together to develop a park and they get all excited. And they come to the meetings or come and participate and vote on things, and then we put it on the shelf for four or five years, and they lose interest. Um so I'd like to see some money so that we can be more responsive to people when they do participate. And show that um their money is going into something that they have actually invested their time into. Um in terms of revenue, uh I really support the tourism uh part of it. I think that's a very important. Uh the small business development, uh both downtown and in West Salem, along with job creation. I think are going to be really crucial with that part. So those are my comments so far.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Phillips.
Okay. So um to start with just a few comments, uh I I I feel like I'm I'm pretty satisfied. With um what I'm seeing in terms of uh the written summary of of what we have as this progress report. Um on our council uh priorities, our policy priorities. Um as it pertains to the strategic plan that, you know, we we voted on a year or two ago. Um you know, I remember participating this initially. Um, you know, I remember participating this initially as a, as a guest counselor in the counselor-elect phase in late twenty twenty. Um, I think that, you know, we as a body have done a pretty good job of uh, taking the tool that is the data collection. Process of the community survey, I mean, it is an important tool, it's not the only tool that we have. To uh, meet the needs of, um, you know, the residents of, of our community. Um, but it is important and, you know, we get this every year. Um, so, you know, first, I, I just, I agree with this. Um, it may sound like there's lack of urgency, but the exact opposite is true. I mean, two years in a row, we've had, uh, you know, fifty-eight, fifty-seven percent of people identify, you know, housing and homelessness response. As the number one issue, so, I mean, it makes sense to me that we're doing as much as we have. Um, and that what we're writing here, you know, it seems to be our best effort as staff and as a. Policy setting board, um, to achieve, you know, positive change to make an i- impact on that, you know, priority issue. I'm also not surprised to see, um, you know, the perception that, uh, you know, crime is, is an issue that is of concern. Uh, I agree that there's a warning light going off. And I think that's in part why this body, uh, at the Salem City Council chose to fund. The uh, SOS team that has two sworn officers, uh, as well as Public Works. Um, and Code Enforcement, um, you know, to, to help make a difference and to respond to hotspots throughout the city of Salem. And then again, as a body, we unanimously voted to fund. Six new sworn officers for the Salem Police Department to help Chief Womack move towards his uh, community. Uh, policing model that he, you know, has a set part of his strategic plan for that organization. So I, I guess, you know, my thoughts right now are, you know, one, this seems, you know. Pretty reasonable and in a difficult time where we all are aware of the constraints that we have, um, in terms of funding. Uh, I guess my rhetorical question that I don't know that can be answered tonight, but I, I want to follow up with staff, uh, a- and my colleagues in future. Is just, are we, are we missing anything based on the information, the tool that was just provided to us from the community added? Uh, the community satisfaction survey, to me, it seems like this is still. Pretty decent, you know, document and summary of what we're trying to achieve to move the needle in terms of the feedback we're hearing from our community. Um, I don't want to be caught in a cycle where we're chasing polls. But I, I do want to make sure that we're, you know, responding to the magnitude of, you know, information that we're, we're getting back. And, and my rhetorical question is just, are, is there anything else we could do? And then, you know, to staff, what do you need to continue to be successful? What do we need to do as a policy-setting board to help you be successful in, in, in moving the needle and getting a lot of these things done? Um, I mean, I certainly look forward to the navigation center being, you know, fully online, hopefully by, by no later than March of next year. Um, but like where, where can we, uh, you know, get the biggest bang for our buck in terms of, you know, if we choose to spend a little bit of. Uh, you know, funding, although that's preciously scarce right now, where, where would it almost cost us more not to? Um, and then, uh, you know, finally, to get my comments out there. Uh, I agree that, you know, we have, you know, a lot of hard work coming up in the near future. Uh, but I see us at a branch point in terms of, we can either find ways to raise revenue. Or, you know, there'll be some expectation of slashing services. And in my last nearly two years, uh, in this position, I haven't heard anybody who wants us to slash services. So, uh, you know, I am, uh, in favor of finding ways to raise revenue. And to get our fair share from additional stakeholders, like, you know, the state and other municipalities that, that serve uh, our community.
Thank you, Councilor, and just as a reminder for everyone, I just want to make sure that we're. We're mindful of the question that we were asked in this, at this point, which is, what are the things on this list that are our priorities in terms of what do we want the staff, what do we want to lean into? Um, and so I guess I'm just going to offer mine quickly and then we'll go onto more, more hands. Uh, I think everything in the left-hand column under addressing homelessness should be our priorities, I've said that for the past, I think, four years. Um, we certainly need to continue to support our investments in sheltering and our response. And we need to identify sustainable revenue, but I don't want to be, I don't want to limit ourselves to just sustainable revenue sources, I want additional revenue sources as well. Even if they're not sustainable, grants, uh, one-time funding for the legislature, those sorts of things, so I don't want to. Solely focus on sustainable revenue, although that certainly needs to be done. I want to look for all, all types of revenue that we can come up with, so those are my priority, uh. Priorities for the, the coming year, Councilor Nordike.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the point of clarification. And I also wanted to take a step back from this list here, I. I want to make sure I understand what we have before us, the document in our materials tonight, the community report. Identifies the twenty twenty-two policy agenda priorities. And in skimming that document, I mean, I see things in those priority lists that I would expect would be carried over. To next year unless we said something differently tonight. And tha- that's my understanding, but if that's not what we're here to do, then I feel like. This list on our screen only covers a tiny fraction. Of all the various priorities and all the work we've done that's identified in the thirty-two page community report. So I think I just need clarification, what do we need to do with all the great priorities that are identified and listed in the twenty twenty-two prior? Report and compare that with this very short list, uh, that is on our screen tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Colleen, excuse me, Colleen, can you address that, the Councilor's question?
Yeah, so there's a tremendous amount of ongoing work, those twenty twenty-two priorities are included in the ongoing work. This is the first of two sessions, if you recall from prior years, what staff has done is taken your. Kind of initial go-forward priorities from this meeting, gone back and done the work of, okay, what would it take to do that? Sometimes that list then grows, changes a little bit, um, or maybe shrinks and then comes back to you in January to. Really talk a little bit more about the how and finalization, so. Twenty twenty-two still being delivered on, some of those things are going to be completed by the end of this fiscal year. Some of them are essentially ongoing work, like many of the things in that addressing homelessness column. In the equity column, for example, and so that, those are not going to be stopped because of any conversation tonight. Keith, anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, all right, Colleen, that's, that's very helpful, um.
Hold on one second, Councilor, I think, uh, we were going to get a comment from Mr. Staley before you.
Oh, okay, sorry, I misheard, go ahead.
Uh, no worries, thank, thank you, uh. Directly to Councilmember Nordike's question about, uh. The, the community report and our intentions around it, our hope this evening is to receive any feedback from council. Uh, any changes that you see that are necessary, but certainly our perspective is that this work is not done. That there is much in the report that we haven't yet addressed, there's much work that is ongoing that needs to continue. Um, I'm hearing gener- generally the sentiment is for us to stay the course. And that's really what we were asking about is, is are we in a state of course mode? Uh, I agree that the report is, is an, an awesome and well-done piece of work. Uh, that we are in the middle of, uh, in fact, we're not even in, in the middle yet, we're still at the very beginnings of. And we need to be patient and continue to execute there, I think we can see some. Potentially emerging trends that we may want to start to think about how we address the concerns about. Crime, for example, and how we can pull this in, but I would suggest that. Addressing homelessness is related to that. Many of the concerns that people experience around crime, uh, relate to other issues on this list. Um, if that persists, then we need to continue to turn our focus there and. Uh, I see that Trevor, uh, uh, Womack is on the call, Chief Womack is on the call this evening or on, on this meeting. And perhaps you could step forward and offer a little bit of insight about that as well, if, if that's okay with the mayor.
Yes, that's perfectly fine, thank you, Mr. Staley. Chief Womack?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, so the specific insight you were asking for, Keith, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, no worries, um. As you can see by the slide that's currently being displayed, uh, addressing homelessness remains a critical concern, but. What we saw in the survey is that our response to crime in our community is, is. There's growing anxiety around, you know, what's going on in our. Community from a, 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 a crime response perspective, so. I was hoping that you could say a few words about. Your thoughts about that issue and why that might be the case and how it might relate to the goals that we have in front of us. And whether there is any additional or new goals that you might suggest.
Yes, the, thank you for that opportunity, um, excuse me, I do think that, uh. And, uh, the gentleman that was speaking about the survey, uh, earlier too, I do think that's not necessarily unique to Salem, right? I think, um, across Oregon, even across the country, there's this sense of. As we've seen, certain levels of violence increasing in some of our larger communities, there's an awareness of that, it's more visible in the media. Um, and so that's influencing folks' perception on crime and our response. And then sometimes it's, it's associated with the, um, the, the intensity and the level of. Of, uh, some of the, the issues we see around our unsheltered population and by, by no means am I saying that, uh, our unsheltered population is, is. You know, the root of all crime, I'm just saying that some of those issues are commingled and complicated. And when there's a lack of effective response around those issues, I think that can translate over to the public safety side. Um, because we, while we have a role in dealing with, um, our response to our unsheltered population as a stakeholder. Obviously, we're not the solution to that problem, and yet we still are pulled into those issues a lot as a, as a primary first responder. So I think sometimes it's a complicated mix of those things together that affects that perception. Um, and I do think, as Councilor Nordike mentioned, I think. That it's right to think about public safety in those terms and not exclusive, you don't separate these things out. And as Councilor Nordike mentioned, when we're talking about potential sustainable revenue sources, to me, that makes sense to look at it comprehensively. Police needs, fire needs, also some of the public safety issues and needs, um, in addressing homelessness as well and looking at that together. Um, and then, and, and from our side, uh, just in our, within the resources that we already have with our strategic plan, we called that an entire area. Around improving our relationship and our response to homelessness, and so we are stepping up and stepping in more as a convener of stakeholders around this issue. Um, and trying to focus most on, on the safety aspect of why police and when police should be involved in these situations. And so we're investing our time and effort there as well to try to improve our, um, our response as a key stakeholder.
Thank you, Chief, I wanted to circle back to Councilor Nordike to make sure she had all of her follow-ups. Before we go into.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Hoy, I do appreciate that, um, the only other thing I was going to add is that. When I look at page ten of the community report, priority one, responding to our sheltering crisis, I'm supportive of continuing those priorities. I'm supportive of continuing pretty much all the priorities, I, I think the city manager wants to know, do you want to stay the course? Do you want to go in a rapidly different direction? I don't see a need to go in a rapidly different direction. I think this council has realized in the years, even before I joined it to some extent. That homelessness needs to be a priority and affordable housing needs to be a priority. And looking at sending the right type of public safety responder. To different types of public safety needs is something that makes a lot of sense for our bottom line. And to ensure that we're sending the right tool to the right job, so. I think I'm, I'm good for the time being on those issues, um. The only other thing I want to say, which is completely unrelated, and then I. Don't want to hog the conversation, I want my other colleagues to speak, I want to give a shout out to the twenty is plenty mentioned in the community report. And I did have a specific question about twenty is plenty. Um, is that an option for collector streets? And the reason I ask is that I attended a community forum exclusively about one collector street in South Salem. Known as South, or excuse me, known as Salem Heights Avenue. And there are a lot of concerns about people speeding up and down Salem Heights Avenue. But I don't think the twenty is plenty model would apply because that's for residential streets, not collector streets where we need. Our, uh, fire and our snowplows, so no snowplows, or excuse me, no speed bumps. Uh, no twenty mile per hour speed limit. But what I'm hearing from the fifty or so people who gathered a couple nights ago, they're still very concerned about. What we can do to do traffic calming. Uh, that is affordable and possible for a collector street, and I see, uh, Director Fernandez has jumped on board.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may, sure, Counselor, twenty is plenty is a, uh. Uh, is a state statute that does apply to collectors, uh, as well as local streets. Uh, and I can understand the confusion in the community, uh, our own neighborhood traffic management plan does not allow. For speed humps on collectors, uh, but the state statute does allow for twenty is plenty, for, for twenty mile an hour speed limit. Uh, on collector streets, we are, uh, we have engaged, uh, I, I, I listened, uh. With great interest about the use of consultants, so we have engaged a consultant to help us with the update of the neighborhood traffic management plan. Uh, that is actively being worked on because we have, uh, the redo of the plan related to the twenty mile an hour speed, the twenty is plenty. Uh, the, uh, uh, redo of the speed hump program that Councilor Gonzalez had brought a, uh. Uh, a motion to council, uh, last, uh, on the heels of the twenty is plenty motion from, from Councilor Stapleton. And then our own staff had been working on redoing our stop sign. Uh, policy which dates to, you know, twenty, thirty years ago. So, uh, so we want to update that to allow for more, uh, installation of more stop signs in neighborhoods, so we're updating. The neighborhood traffic management, addressing all of that, uh, we're out in the neighborhoods, uh, talking to people and we should be back at council here. Uh, uh, pretty soon to, uh, to have that conversation of how all that comes together.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, uh, Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy, you know, and I think a lot of my questions were answered because just based on this, um, this information here, I didn't know. If some of these have been started, like the reviewing the charter boards and commission, I know we talked about it, but what is that going to take? Uh, but for the most part, I'm in agreement that, you know, I mean consensus that, that, um, you know, we move forward. Um, I think the main thing is just, you know, being honest with our community, as I look at some of these things, you know. Uh, we can say we're focused on affordable housing, but we have to be honest on what, what that really means as far as how many units are possible per year, I mean, just. You know, because we have, um, uh, underbuilt, you know, for a decade, you know, so. And that's all across, you know, all types of housing, and then when I see, you know, uh, terms like, you know, seeking sustainable revenue and. Uh, um, you know, sustainable revenue sources, you know, one of the things I want to make sure is we're looking at it with equity. You know, because a lot of families are, um. Severely impacted by inflation, you know, um, rent is out of control, right? And that's in addition to all these other things, and we're going to be basically be pushing people out if we're not careful. So I just want to make sure that, as we're focused on these things, I see equity here and there, but I want to make sure those two are connected, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Nishioka.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy, and what I wanted to do is address your direct question on of these items that are on the screen. What were important to us, um, and these have been already discussed. But addressing homelessness is certainly for me, uh, top priority, building great neighborhoods, um, probably would be number two. And in the sense that as we build those great neighborhoods, we will probably be able to garner some of the other things that are in the. Community resilience and increasing equity, so I, I see those two as the highest priority. I want to offer a, a compliment to Colleen for the time that she's spent interviewing me. And I had no idea what was really trying to be, uh, gathered in that conversation. Um, I am so very pleased with the work that, that she's done in the sense that every sentence that's up here is. Probably what I was either thinking and she was able to figure that out. So anyway, I just wanted to say, uh, a great thank you and, and also to Mr. Staley. Stay the course, I'm in agreement, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, yes, Colleen is a master gleaner of, out of conversations, she can pull all sorts of wisdom out of our words and. So, yes, we're lucky to have our Councilor Phillips.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, yeah, and thank you, Colleen, a great job, um, really appreciate the work you've done, um. Uh, so, uh, i- in terms of the specific question, I mean, at the risk of being redundant, I think that, you know, we've been prioritizing. Um, the work on, on, uh, the homelessness response, uh, as well as, uh, housing. Uh, for years and that, that work still is, is a, of, of top priority.
uh, as well as, uh, housing, uh, for years, and that, that work still is, is a, of, of top priority. Um, in terms of pairing this list down, I don't really want to subtract anything to it. I, I do think that, you know, there are some things that align. Um, so we get big bang for the buck in terms of, you know, climate action implementation uh, with the, the bond implementation rollout and the transportation system plan update. Uh, there's a lot of potential there. So I think it, it naturally becomes a, a higher priority. Um, and it's also, I believe, what, you know, the community and residents I've interacted with are looking for. Um, in terms of community, uh, you know, safety and, and healthy community, um, I would like to continue, uh, the priorities as listed here. Uh, you know, making sure that we, we, uh, get, uh, Chief Womack's, um, community policing model off the ground and, and supported, uh, to, to facilitate that modernization. Um, and, uh, also, you know, get us the, uh, the capabilities or, you know, the, the capacity, um, to have, you know, the fire, uh, uh, service members. Um, you know, we're, we've, we funded now an additional one net new, uh, fire department. So like, looking at a way to expand that so that we can decrease those response times. And, and again, I say all that at the risk of being redundant. I mean, mainly I'm saying, you know, this looks good. The priorities look good. But the one thing I, I do want to remember to say is it was on one of the original documents is that outreach and communication. I mean, I think we've done an excellent job uh, in terms of the our Salem outreach. It was mentioned before, we won awards for that. Uh, staff did, and I, you know, we all compliment them for that and outreach is part of communication. But I, I think that with, you know, uh, new, uh, city manager, uh, Keith Staley being here and potentially some reorganization happening, there's continued opportunity and need for, you know, coordinated and improved communication across the city. And I feel like to a certain extent, we heard that tonight in some of the documents and data that we collected. So just the one thing that I, I don't see as clearly in this, I think it's built into it and implied, is the, the need for improved communication.
Thank you, Counselor. I definitely share that and our strategic communication, I think drives a lot of the results that we got from Mr. Horvick tonight. So thank you for voicing that. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I couldn't agree more. Um, I think all of this looks fantastic. I think, uh, Mayor, when you were saying everything on the left-hand side is the, is the top priority, I agree with you, although everything on here, um, is really important. Um, you know, I, and a lot of times when I talk to neighborhood associations about this, you know, the work that we have been doing over the past five, six years um, in regards to our unhoused, um, our sheltering crisis has been a lot like building a house. Everything has been underground for a while, you know, making those connections, uh, building relationships and partnerships and, and getting the infrastructure in place. And I'm really hopeful that the, the investments that we've made over the last few years, um, are really going to start to gain, um, momentum and people will be able to start to see, um, the, the fruits of our labor. And so I am continuing to be optimistic about that. Um, I see my role here, um, as a supporter of staff in the work that we're asking you all to do. So, um, you know, looking at funding, um, options, not only, uh, like the mayor said, uh, for sustaining, but also growing the services that we have, um, looking for also one-time, um, investments as well. Um, and then really hopefully that can address the staffing shortages, which will then make this list of things that we want to do, uh, easier on staff, um, in order to get done. I do want to point out that I am really, uh, curious to learn more about the city's charter and opening that up and seeing how we can, uh, revise that as well as boards and commissions. Um, I don't know how that's done, so I would love to hear more from staff, uh, not tonight. I'm sure this is a bigger question. Uh, but maybe when you come back to us in January about how, what that looks like and how I can support you, how council can support you um, in getting the work done. Uh, thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this is Counselor Leon, Ward Four. I, I kind of want to again emphasize some of the conversations that come up with several other counselors. Uh, for example, Counselor Gonzalez talked, um, specifically about addressing homelessness as one of the council priorities, which I agree because we are still continuing to see a lot of individuals who are being priced out. I have stories of community members who, um, their property or their, the house, the, the apartment that they've rented for say five, six, seven years have been bought by new owners and the new owners are already increasing the rent several hundred dollars, which is already outside of their budget. So what are ways are we looking to explore, continuing of exploring affordable housing as well as ensuring that we're not pushing out members of our community, members who've been living here for so long? Whether it's somebody who's trying to buy their first home or they're looking for a place to rent, we need to do a better job to ensure that we're not pricing people out, that we're not kicking them to the curb and say telling them, hey, you know, great, you were here, but now buy, we don't need you because we're going to find somebody else who could afford the new prices. Um, another area that I also wanted to highlight was specifically the, um, the increasing equitable delivery of city services, um, the last bullet point, um, specifically on boards and commissions, you know? I'm, I'm seeing that we have again, a ton of openings once more, and that's been an ongoing thing. That's not, you know, not just under us, under council, but over the years. So what are ways are we increasing the diverse representation of Salem's community? You know, from the beginning of my time on council, now I've been consistently asking for materials to be available in multiple languages. In the last report that we heard, you know, this is an ongoing thing that I talked about last year and I probably talked about the year before. And how are we losing out on building these better connections with our community? You know, Counselor Nordike also mentioned a topic earlier, doing better with outreach and looking for better ways to engage with our community, whether it's town halls, community events, especially as people are starting to feel more comfortable as we live in this COVID flu, whooping cough, whatever the next pandemic is, world that we're living in now. I also had, you know, the opportunity to connect with many members of the community because of my work in running a nonprofit and the connections I've built from my partnerships with running a nonprofit. You know, Counselor Stapleton shared last week that she attended the event with the Marshallese community and Counselors, not Counselor, um, Mayor Hoy and, uh, Counselor Hoy, I believe, and, uh, Counselor Gonzalez had met with Levy uh, to talk about the work at Mono a Mono. So those are some ways that we're starting to build these connections that we've already had within the community, but we have to now do a better job of strengthening it and not thinking that it's a once in a year kind of activity that we're only going to say, hi, how's it going? We'll see you next year because that's not building the relationships that we need to strengthen our, you know, delivery and not only of city services, but also our relationship with members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, uh, just a couple of points. I'm in full agreement with the left-hand side being the most critical. Um, I, I feel that addressing the difficult, critical work first is going to help to improve the perceptions of the general public. Um, doing the biggest work for the greatest visible difference. Um, also something, uh, Counselor Gonzalez said struck me, and that is to create realistic expectations and to communicate those well with, um, with the public. Um, so that they can see what we're doing and then watch as it comes to fruition. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Barney.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. Um, I agree with everyone, you know, addressing homelessness is number one, and that was also identified on the survey. Um, as I look through the bullets here, I am looking at them through, uh, the lens of community priorities as outlined in the survey, and I kind of wonder if we had seen the results of the survey before we developed these council priorities, I wonder if there would have been any differences. Um, I'm just, uh, I look at it and I'm supportive of what we have here. Um, I'm wondering if our community who, you know, responded with the survey would uh, align with this as well. So that's just a comment, but I'm very supportive of all these. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I guess we'll go now back to our expert gleaner to see if she has enough information, uh, from this, these conversations that we, she's been hearing to take us, uh, to the next step.
I think so. And, you know, excuse me, I very much appreciate everyone's engagement and thoughtfulness tonight. Um, there's been a tremendous amount of information shared and also reinforced and both reinforcing the results of the survey and, you know, what staff have been saying to you all tonight and in prior meetings and through the community report. So what we will do is we'll take this discussion away. I have four full pages of notes that I can hardly read and I will, uh, help share those with staff and we'll work together on the next piece of this. So a little bit about next step. So I'm going to show this graphic again. So again, you're here in the fall, we're, we're doing our first meeting. We'll come back in January with that list of priorities and the how. And, um, and that's it. That's my thank you. So I am going to stop sharing. And wondering if Mayor City Manager, you have anything else you'd like to share?
Mr. Staley?
I think Colleen's done an excellent job in wrapping things up and our intention is to come back to you in January and continue the conversation based on the information that we've leaned this evening. Uh, we definitely will be able to refine it. And I think as Councilmember Varnie was suggesting, we can take a look at the survey again and see if it informs us in a way that, that suggests adding anything to the, to our response.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Is there anybody that had any further comments or feedback that they wish they had made but didn't get the chance to? Not seeing any hands, uh, just double checking with staff then. Are there any other things we need to cover tonight before we adjourn? All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for this robust conversation. I hope you all, all have a nice Thanksgiving and spend it with the people you care about. So see you, uh, next week. Take care. We're adjourned.
For more videos and for more information, go to capitalcommunitymedia.org and follow us on social media.